I would like to call the April twenty second, two thousand twenty five meeting of the North Smithfield School Committee to order. At six forty eight P M. Roll call please. Chair Bartamoli.
Here.
Snail.
Here.
Mister.
Here.
Mister Delacruz.
Here.
Mister Simkins.
Here.
We have a forum, move on to the.
The flag of the United States of America. The children of the land from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and with liberty just once in a while.
Okay, we are now open for public comment. Or community comment. Do we have a sign up sheet?
Would.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Hey Tracy Nangle, if you'd like to come up, please, and just identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Tracy Nangle, teacher here at North Smithfield, on the eighth grade team. I'm here to speak on behalf of our support staff as they work through negotiating a new contract. I've taught in a district since two thousand and eight when the building opened. And this building still looks a lot like a brand new school. This is due to the hard work of our maintenance and custodial people who take pride in keeping our buildings looking their best. Our district uses long term planning and strategic spending to manage all the properties that we have to manage. But the actual execution of the work is done by the caring and capable individuals who work hard here and take pride in what they do for all of us. Our students come into contact with these individuals and they are consistently professional and kind to our students. It takes a special kind of a person to work in a school setting. And there needs to be a level of trust between them, the students and the teachers who are here in the building every day. That trust exists with the people we have caring for our school buildings. I know that students or teachers can approach any of them and ask for help at any time and they will do anything they can do to help us and gladly help us. I never feel like I'm bothering them or I'm asking them to do too much for me. Our office personnel, they're the center of our school communications and interaction. They handle a large variety of challenges daily that would stress any of us out, even on a good day. They have a positive and a professional attitude. They're the first face that students and parents see when they enter our buildings. And as a parent of four students who went through this district, I cannot tell you how nice it is to walk into an office and have someone smile at you, no matter why you're there, you're always, you know, you go in with a little bit of trepidation. I can call them at any time during the day. And they will help me get information I need, somehow find a way to help me. In spite of the many priorities they have during the day, they don't forget about me, they follow through with what they tell me they're going to do, their function somewhat like an air traffic controller. And they get us all through the day, they get us all going where we're supposed to to go and they help us avoid catastrophe. They're an amazing resource for us, we really, really need them, they're critical to the smooth running of our schools. And our instructional assistants, they are seemingly tireless, they encourage and support our students and our teachers, they show up ready to work with our students in order to increase their learning and improve their understanding. Teachers count on them for their expertise, their dedication to their responsibilities. And as a support, teachers need to be able to address the learning of all the students in their rooms. These instructional assistants need to be endlessly flexible, learn to use many different curriculums and online platforms, handle serious emergencies and behavior differences with composure and compassion. We educate all types of learners and our instructional assistants are the ones engaged with our most challenging students all day long and handle very challenging situations professionally and impressively. All of these people do their jobs for relatively low pay and few accolades. They show up wherever they are needed and they are professional, exhibit integrity in their work and they are loyal and trustworthy. In other words, they are excellent employees and members of our school community. Our school community absolutely needs them and also values them and encourages all of you to do so as well. I encourage you to listen to their contract proposals and present them with a package that respects and appropriately acknowledges their contributions to the district, thank you.
Kathleen Fagnett, please.
Hey, everyone, I'm Kathleen Fagnan, I am a health and phys ed teacher here at the middle school. Throughout my sixteen years here, the members of the support staff have not only been the backbone of our schools, but they are people who consistently go above and beyond to ensure that every staff student here and every member of this community knows how important they are. If you've ever had a support system around you, you know how important they are to you. And if you've ever been a part of a support system, you know how undervalued they actually can be. Our support staff is a major component in making each day successful for not only our teachers, the administrators, but everyone in between. Their dedication, patience, and hard work should not go unnoticed. They are the calm in the chaos, the extra hands when there aren't enough, they make classrooms stronger. Whether they are guiding a student through a tough moment or celebrating their small victories, their presence makes a difference every single day. They matter so much, their impact is lasting, and they should be valued as such, thank you very much.
Jamie Austin.
Good evening, Jamie Austin, special education teacher kindergarten through second grade at NSES. I'm here to talk on behalf of the support staff in the North Smithfield School Department. I've worked for North Smithfield for twelve years and I've had the privilege to work with many of the support staff in our district. And let me tell you how lucky we are to have them, they are kind, they're compassionate, and they're dedicated to our schools. Our administrative assistants make our school a welcoming environment. They, like they said, they're the first face you see and as a parent, I appreciate that. The smiles on their face, they keep our our class, our school in order, they help ease the minds of nervous parents, our teachers and our students. Our custodian and maintenance keep our schools safe and clean. They keep our schools running, when there's snow on the ground, who's there, they are. They help the teachers in whatever you ask, I've never had a custodian or a maintenance person tell me that they couldn't do it, they're always there. And of course, our instructional assistants, I personally could not run my classroom without them. I teach the intellectual disabled children, I have nine students in my classroom, children that we have to toilet, children that we have to help feed, children with significant behaviors. And without my girls in my classroom, I could not run my classroom. They work directly with the students in individual and groups, they help modify the class work that we need to modify for the students. They bathroom the kids, they support behaviors, they deal with the most significant behaviors and they do it with a smile on their face. They motivate the students to to learn in ways as they jump through hoops, they make learning fun. They enforce the classroom rules and appropriate behavior, they supervise students in classrooms during lunch and at recess. They help prepare lessons, whether it is helping students learn, greeting parents with a smile, cleaning the school, clearing trees that fall on cars, or supporting, they are an important part of our community. I feel like it takes a village to run a school and they are part of our village. And I feel like they're an important part of our village and we need to make them feel like an important part of our village. Thank you for allowing me to speak and I hope that you support them and call them, feel like they're as important as we do.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak who has not signed up? Anyone?
I just want to say thank you and we do support everybody and I think it's wonderful that you're all coming together and you support one another, that's what this school is about in this town. And we are working towards that, so we are doing our best. And we're going to get there, so thank.
At this point.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
We hold off a minute.
Yeah, we'll wait.
Hey, before we move on to the consent agenda, I would like to move up in item six, new business request by Hayden Dubey for a memorial plaque honoring Ellie Lutorno, discussion vote or other action.
Good evening, school committee members, Mr. St. Jean, Mrs. Arnold and staff. My name is Hayden Dubey and I'm here to talk on my senior project. Senior project is to name the library at elementary school, it's my grandmother, who worked there for seven years. My grandmother had a lasting impact at elementary school and I, Mr. and Mrs. Dano, love to honor that. She would have retired this year because she wanted to see me walk through the halls, but sadly she passed away in two thousand and twenty three, February, in the middle of the year. Many kids loved her at the school and I would just love to honor that. So, thank you.
So, yeah, so we're looking to put a dedication plaque outside of the library and you've come up with the words and the design.
It's been approved by Mrs. Dano, too.
Right. Do you have any idea when that would be available and we do a little dedication ceremony?
So, the plaque should be done either this week or next week.
Okay.
And we're still talking about when the ceremony could be. But hopefully sometime like May.
Okay.
For my senior project presentation.
And if you would let Mrs. Dano let us know.
Yes.
So, we can.
Yeah.
Participate.
Yeah.
All right, and one of the reasons why he's approaching going in this direction is because we do have a naming and dedicating dedication policy, which is fairly cumbersome and it will take a very long time, whereas this is something more personal and more immediate that that he could do this year.
Questions, I am all in favor of this, I just want to know, are we are we doing the purpose of policy by going this route?
No. Thank. All right, and Mr. Conamos is the mentor, so helping with this project.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, very good.
I have one question, so is the plaque almost done, is that where you're at?
Yes, the plaque should be done either this Thursday or next week, so it'll be a finished product. Uh, yes.
It's been ordered.
Yeah.
I would just like to say congratulations to you, you should be very proud of yourself and I know your grandmother would be very, very proud of you. Ellie was just a special person, special to so many people and I think that this is a fitting tribute to her and to her memory, so thank you for thinking of doing this and congratulations to you.
Thank you.
And what we are going to do for the different part of the day.
Yeah. So Ellie was my first class with Ellie in kindergarten, actually, second grade actually was my first class with her.
As a student or as a teacher?
Teacher. Okay, sorry. So, my first group of kindergartners with her are now sixth graders. And my final class with her is the current second graders. And so what we're going to do, we'll have, we'll invite the our former students that are still at NSSO, the fourth graders that we had, third graders, second graders. And then we'll gather them all right in front of the library, Hayden will be there, we'll say a few words and explain the dedication and we'll unveil the plaque right above the doors.
Let us know when it is, because I would love to attend. Just want to say it's a great senior projects, it's very thoughtful and it's a great way to honor.
He's been, he's been working very hard, he's comes into the class and basically taken on the role his grandmother did, working with my students and he's done awesome. And I know I'm late, but I just wanted to say about Ellie, like her dedication to the students was unmatched, like she inspired me so much to be like better teacher and kind of be how I am today. She's still great at this, but she's, I know she's with me with all the students and the lives that she touched.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for sharing that, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dano, do you need to say anything on this or you all?
If you would like me to, if you have any.
If you have anything.
So Hayden was my second grade student way back and ten years ago. And so Ellie would come in to volunteer in our class, so we would just call her Nana. And then I think if I'm right, through that, she became an IA and then started working in the school. So it is an honor for me to be able to have this plaque in her memory on our campus because she was very important, even beyond just being, well, not just being, but being like CIA, so, yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I was going to ask, do you want to move the other part of that, reuse of facilities and insurance?
Sure, why not?
Okay.
Okay.
Um, do we need to take a vote or action on that for approval?
Oh, for the for the plaque, yes.
Okay. So is there a motion, does anyone have a motion to approve the request for a memorial plaque honoring Ellie Lutorno at the elementary school library? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yeah. I just want, but can we approve if we don't have the design in front of us? I don't, I mean, I'm just asking, I'm going to prove it, I'm going to prove it.
Excuse me?
You're approving the request. Good.
Approving the request, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Motion passive. Thank you.
All right, and if you want to stay with new business, this this is pretty quick, so we have.
I'll move that one up, benefit. Five, I mean, item six, item two. Do we need to move that up or not?
We're moving up item six.
So, so Northman five K, past several years has been a senior project. And one of the, one of the difficulties of a community based senior project is that it does require insurance. So we have a policy for community events, for sport events, rentals. Because our students are involved and as association, it becomes a kind of a school, if not town event, still requires insurance, now when we require three to five million, they're asking if we could do the one to three million rate, which is less. NSA has agreed to pick up the the cost of the insurance, but the request is to just come in at at the lower rate, which we've done, well, I think once before. Town baseball required, you know, request that came to the school committee and asked for a rate reduction for insurance.
I was concerned about that because, I mean, I'm not saying no, but like, like, I'm going to still, Warren had like an event with a proves an accident and it went way over their umbrella policy, you know, and it's, so the point is, this is a road race, you know, and you know, if somebody I don't know, you know, I mean, they get warned, there was an issue, this is a public record, I'm not saying anything, it's not public.
Right.
They had a problem and an incident off the police force and if they had to do an extra tax assessment because it went way over their path on what they had with the trust and same ones we're here through, so do we have an umbrella that covers an extra on the one particular, you know, we just go ahead.
So I just want to be clear, the trust is not going to cover this event because the trust, the insurance does not cover like the kids and if they want to rent the facility to hold an event, that the trust will not, they do not cover that, so this is like a tool up policy, right? So it's a tenant agreement that they need to go out and they need to fulfill so that they are covered, their family is covered, that type of thing, so they go out and they buy insurance from companies, so there are companies that run five Ks that can suggest insurance coverage. As we know, we ask the people who rent, who are our tenants, to match our coverages because we know that one million does not go as far as it used to, so that is why there certain organizations, for example, Little League wasn't able to meet our three or five million dollar aggregate. And in that case, the school committee can exercise discretion and accepting lower limits. But you need to consider the hazards and an analysis of the type of event, right? So the Little League's coming down, they're playing, do we have things around the fences so no one hurts themselves? Are there holes in the ground, you know, that they ask that you do that type of analysis before you go and you make those decisions. So, yeah, just to be clear, it's not going to be the trust, the trust will not ensure such events. This is someone renting our facility realistically, okay, just wanted to, sure.
And we do have.
Got my question about the liability, so we're talking about the the coverage amount, but what is actually covered under that, because this is a race that spans the whole road over here, is it incidents that might only happen on the ground, which is both facilities, it's a higher thing.
So I can't speak to the type of coverage that they're purchasing. The idea is that you would purchase such insurance so that if something, God forbid, went wrong and happened, that that person running the event would not be sued or their family be sued, or you, do you know what I mean? So I can't speak to the specifics, it would probably just be liability insurance.
And we do have a three million dollar minimum reason, so that there's a policy in place for that. What would warrant lowering it is, is this like a lower, like just not as dangerous of that?
I I can't speak to that, they just ask that you approach it as viewing the hazards of the event and just make an informed decision if you are going to lower it, I don't know what those other insurance companies offer. Maybe they can't get more than one million for such an event, high risk events or things of that nature, they don't even, they won't even cover, you know, certain events. But I do know there are insurance companies that run the whole, like the whole race itself, or not insurance companies, companies that run like the whole race itself. But yeah, it's not our insurance, I can't speak to it, I don't know, but we ask that they meet our coverage limit. So in order for them to get a lower limit, they have to request that from you. And then you would be the party that says that they can lower the limits.
NSA, I'm sorry, I'm lost the question, so NS, if I didn't talk, can you finish on your point?
Okay, I I understand that the NSA will pick it, will pick up the the price of the insurance.
So in in past years, I mean, they must have run into the same situation in past years, so, and I know that NSA has picked it up in the past years, have they picked up more than the million that they're asking for this year?
I would have to pull the certificate of insurances, it's not really something that was on my radar, so I don't have that. We have increased from one million to three million probably in the last five years, so that is like an, that we did that, you know, based on what the trust suggested, at some point, there are districts that do five million, that type of thing, so I can't really sign.
So it, just actually going forward, one of the things that we are working with the high school, I mean, the senior projects are fantastic. But we are having an awful lot of fundraisers or people wanting to do public multi-school events which run into insurance issues and so we're going to have to work with the high school and the senior project coordinator to come up with some other things because this is getting very complicated now, and the thing with Northman five K, it's become a community event and to put it on the student or students who are, you know, doing this as part of their senior project, having to take out insurance to cover, i- is is very problematic. So we we looking for something for this year. But going forward, honestly, the Northman five K has to become more than a senior project event. You know, the town can get around it, you know, or some organization within town can can sponsor it.
No, I think, I mean, no, I think we actually lost the Northman five K, I think it's just, and I'm not blaming anyone or anyone, it's just it's timing of it, you know, because realistically, let's say April twenty twenty second, I mean, if we don't, this is, if we don't approve this tonight, the Northman twelve K, five K doesn't run. You know, I mean, it's really, this is a, do we run it or not, you know, so, I mean, maybe I'm, if I'm misstatement, let me know, that's what it sounds like, if we don't approve this, low insurance, it's not happening.
They they would have to come up with a source of funding for it.
Do we have an idea what the dollar amounts are between the one and three?
Well, I think the 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 lower amount is a hundred fifty dollars. For the one million.
I I don't know, well, and we have to request, what's that?
I didn't see a quote.
I didn't see a quote for the higher. So.
How did you say a hundred and fifty dollars?
We can't pay it.
We can't.
We can't do it.
No, but we don't, we we don't have any, like, anything we can use for this, I mean, I want to pick up on.
And my understanding was the NSA no, I know, quite, you know, was requesting the.
But I think we also have to be careful because that sets a precedent.
Yes, it does.
Correct, no.
And if something does happen, we are liable.
We can say like, we don't, next, we want more notice, meaning that, you know, we can, it's like, I think, right against the devil, that's the problem. Because I was, I don't know, Dave, I didn't touch you, I didn't touch you up.
No, it's just, we would be liable, right? Or or the student?
Yeah, because they're our student, she, they, like her, her family, you know, that's the type of thing that happens, if we were going to sue somebody.
Right.
Oh, that's a new student, I think if there was an accident, we're running the event and if it happened on, not in the school property, but one of the roads, I think we'd be.
Oh, yeah.
We'd be sued, oh, yeah, we'd be sued.
Yeah, Alicia, you guys have to do with the company that kind of is overseeing this, do they do anything as far as safety is concerned, do they, you know, how can they make this and say?
Right, so I couldn't speak to that, I saw one email that there is like a a company that like coordinates five Ks and road races and they're familiar and they do this stuff all the time, so my understanding is that they have, they handle everything with like the roads and the closing of the roads and and all of that now, um, yeah, I just, outside of that, I can't really speak to the road race, but there is like a company that is running the road race.
Well, I I hate to do this, Lindsay, I see that you're on online, do you have some information regarding the senior project that you could share with us? I was looking to see if Jeff Grins was on because he is, he's the mentor for the student. For the student.
Hello?
Oh.
Sorry, I'm I'm on from my phone.
And and I'm sorry to 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 call on you, but we we.
Nope. Yeah, no, no problem, so just to give a little bit of background, the Northman five K was originally. Um, something that the NSA ran as a fundraiser. Um, it went by the wayside, so it was um dormant, it had stopped running for about seven years. And um from there. Uh, a few years back, a senior decided to pick it back up as her senior project and um. When she did that, it was still operating through the NSA. Um, because they had the nonprofit tax exemption and she needed that to accept donations. So it's always sort of stayed partnered with the NSA, um, this is our first year where the insurance has. Become a bit of a problem, um, I have not experienced this up to this point, so I know we've hit this roadblock, I realize that it's. Late in the season, but that's really just because it's become um an issue that's been raised, so. Um, there is a police escort, the roads are blocked off, people are notified of the road closures. There's no traffic as people are, you know, on on the doing the five K. I'm not sure if any of that information is helpful.
Yeah, sure, uh, Ms. Arm is still Cornell.
Hello.
What's it, hi, what's the difference between the one to three million and three to five? I mean, we took in a hundred and fifty, two hundred bucks, that's what we're talking.
I actually do not know, I I do not know about the insurance information. In terms of the costs.
Who has that information?
Well, we we were sent, Fatima, we 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 were sent the um. Jeff sent us the uh.
In the meantime, I would say that those things that Lindsay mentioned, the police, the roads closed, that is part of like your risk assessment to decide if. That those, that's good information for you, you know, to decide if you're gonna stay at the three or come down to the one, so that would be like part of your risk.
I'm sorry, Alicia, I thought you said that was all from five to three.
So we currently have a three million dollar policy, we ask that all. Um renters need that because that is what we are covered for, that is the guidance that we receive from the insurance company. So I think what they're asking for is the one million, like we did for um the. Little League, sorry.
I mean, if we're talking a hundred something bucks, we can read the money this weekend, you know, I mean, on Earth Day. Right, uh, cause that's a. I'm willing to go with it, it's a risk, I'll I'll go with it, like.
I don't know if they're asking because of the dollar differential, because it sounds like the NSA might be picking up. The the cost, or they're asking because they're not um. They're not giving them the three million dollars, like the insurance company won't quote them the three million dollars, do you know what I'm saying?
I'm I'm pretty sure it would be substantially more.
And I'm insured, it's substantially.
I mean, I I know for myself in business, yeah, exactly, I have it and. A lot of property management company. Yeah, want a three million, right?
It's it's definitely.
The rider is like a hundred and twenty-five dollars. But if this is a new policy, so to speak.
It's like an event policy, so it's a one time, like uh you would do it for, you know, if you rented to. Have a party, let's say, you would, that would be something you would buy to cover yourself personally, it's the same idea.
But are we thinking it's like four hundred or?
I I have no idea.
Yeah, cause I'm just wondering, let's say, two private citizens wanted to make a donation to the NSA. Um, this weekend. To help pay for the three million dollar coverage.
But we don't know if that would cover.
We still don't know, right? We don't know if they were approved for a three million dollar uh plan.
I I would think that if it were a minimal amount of money that NSA would. I would agree if it were minimal, so I'm thinking that it must be. Yeah, I haven't, I haven't seen.
I'm a little bit of a, I don't like it, no, I don't like, you know.
We're all feeling very cautious about it, but but I guess we have a. I look at it, we have town parades. We we have our cross-country runners out on the road, which they're covered by the school, where they did something different, but. So we're being very cautious. But we have done it in the past.
So I have done the event and everything is blocked off, it's only the walkers, the runners. That are on the road, that's it, and there's, you know, people stationed in certain areas until you get back.
I've done it, I've done some more, yeah, so.
I know anything can happen, but.
Right, it's it could happen as we walk out this door. So, um. So I guess we're looking for a motion that we want to. Approve this. Reduction in insurance kind.
I'll make that move, I I'll make that motion about it too.
Is there a second? I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Motion passes. Everybody, please be safe.
Now, Jeff, we can just make it as a obvi-, I mean, obviously. We if we maybe like to have a more advanced notice on this, because again, I think we could coordinate some fundraising that would. Would not at the school, but you know, coordinate fundraisers to maybe address a lot of some of those.
I I think, as the superintendent said earlier, I think that we probably have to look at the senior projects and we may have to. Maybe guide some of our seniors in another direction rather than looking for facility usage. Which becomes a cost factor, um. Maybe look to something else. I I I'm not sure, I'm not sure how we do it, but. If it's becoming a problem because of insurance coverage and liability and.
It's when we have people from outside coming into these events or like in the. Northman five K, it's out of the building and it's throughout the town and it's uh. You know, we've we've had somewhere wonderful projects and 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 good concepts. But wanting to do multi-school or multi-district events.
Right.
Which runs into insurances and other other liabilities.
So, did Pumpkin Fest have to match the three million dollar policy when they were using the facility?
So the town, um, that is run by the town, if I'm not mistaken, correct? So they take on, they, um, yeah. Technically, they.
I mean, I I would still love to know if he has the information about the the higher policy. What that would have been just for our own information.
Definitely, I mean, the sixth graders are going on a field trip to Pulaski Park and. DEM has requested an insurance certificate for that, so you can kind of see the way that um. Things are headed, it's just the caution is there, that's the first time I've ever been asked for that, so it, that's where we're heading.
Actually, could I make a suggestion, and I know, listen, I only because of the exposure, I don't know how other people feel about this. But could it be the kind of thing where maybe Alicia or or we could find out just what's the difference in the amount and it could be a situation where. Like if we knew. It's like under a certain amount, it's like it needs another hundred dollars, just get the other thing, other thing, we could at least find out about that perhaps.
Prior to it. When is this five K?
Next, two weeks, make there, not this weekend, next.
If we can.
If they can do it, they can afford it, they should probably go for the three. I mean, that's, that should be like the most common sense solution to the issue.
I I.
Or at least try to find a quote, they could even uh ask different companies, maybe the person who's running the five K could reach out to a different. Insurance company, something.
I mean, we approved to move forward with it, but but if we can at least reach out and find out, is that option? And if it's just a couple hundred dollars. Maybe we can make it work, just so we have the coverage. But at this point, we have approved it and hopefully in the future. It can work out and and we have prior notice, so we can try to figure it out. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to go back to the consent agenda, discussion vote or other action, is there anything on the consent agenda that? Anyone would like to pull for discussion? If it's approved, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda as is?
Someone.
There a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion has passed. Um, item three, Superintendent St. Jean's report.
Just going to give you some order updates, so over at NSCS, we had the testing and. Um, exceeded the acceptable level of manganese, now. We have, we're under a no-drink order, but we brought in potable water, other water sources. Uh, but to give you an update, so. The test at that point was, it came out as a one point two eight, the cap is point five. We had it retested, right, and the retest is point five nine six. So we're just slightly over. Um, but we do have a corrective action plan that we filed with the Department of Health. And that is, and I'll just read from it. Um, NWSI, which is there are uh water consultants. Has recommended that the green sand plus media be replaced. So there is, the water is filtered going into the well at NSCS and it runs through special sand. Um, that needs to be replaced, so it's gonna be dug up with new sand put in. Uh, NWSI will begin conducting laboratory laboratory tests for iron and manganese samples during their bi-weekly site visits. Until the media um. Has been replaced and for a minimum of two visits following the media replacement. Following, and this is referring to the sand. Following the media replacement, M M NWSI will conduct monthly field testing for iron and manganese to ensure the system operates properly. So, uh. The solution is going into place very shortly, uh, we have ordered the sand. It will be installed and the what, uh, the the testing company will come and 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 uh again. Check the point of entry, get below that point five, but the main thing is, what we're trying to figure out. Uh, the original uh one point two eight that uh uh caused the uh no-drink order. We're not exactly sure if that came from the entry point or the well itself. Alright, the well itself is higher, there is manganese in that well. But that is filtered going through the sand, you know, uh, the sand filtration, uh. And it is is much reduced when it comes into the building, so. But the main thing is, is that, um, whether it was the entry point. That was. Mislabeled, we're not sure, but what's actually coming in is point five nine. We're assuming, uh, there is no baseline because it's a new test and new requirement by the state. That the number of uh of the the. The level of manganese is lower than what we originally thought, it still needs to be addressed. But it's at a lower level. The other thing is Department of Health. And the DEM, and I will be sending out information about this, they have received grant funding. Uh, to check PFAS levels in private wells. So, what they want to do, they want to do a public information session in meeting at Oxford Field High School. Invite the community because they have money to check PFAS in private wells.
I just paid six hundred dollars to do that.
Well, had you not so efficient.
Congratulations.
Seriously.
Yeah, so they're doing an informational workshop, um, and uh. Right now, it's tentatively for five nineteen. Um, here. At the the high school auditorium.
Are we getting interest for that?
Um, and I think it's, it'll start around, uh, open up around five and then start around six, but. There'll be official information that will come out, I just wanted to share that. The other thing is that we have, speaking of PFAS, we have two directions that we seem to be going with as far as the solution. For the PFAS levels in well number two, up by the athletic field, so. We could pursue the original grant. Um, for the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we're queued up to run the pilot program and to have the engineer and do a solution. Uh, for filtration here at the school, right, so. Um. Or. We could. Tap into town water and run up from the town center of Providence Pike through uh Primm Rose and up here. Bigger project or expensive project, but actually, uh. Right now, there's funding for specially collaborative projects, so. Uh, uh, the town administrative town finance director, us. Uh, Department of Health, I'll send something out to any of you members that want to sit on it. Gonna go through the two different avenues and sort of plank our flag on one of them. Uh, but we have, we have options.
Okay.
As long as. All that money isn't. Cut. Um, I'm also reading that uh the EPA may raise PFAS levels, you know, the caps. You know, from that twenty parts per trillion. And bring it up, I don't know, right now, we're just pers- we're pursuing. What we have, what was the uh uh the grants and um just going.
Thank you. Has the town made a definite decision as to whether they are bringing it up through Primm Rose?
Yeah, they've uh um, they filed a grant through Senator Reed's office. Uh, and that's the thing to piggyback. That piece along with the piece that we've already been approved for.
So our six hundred and.
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand, uh. We would still get that to be able to put towards this.
Yes, and we were told that the difference could be made, would possibly be made up in zero interest loans. Uh, uh, actually could be paid back immediately, so. Uh, I'm, I'm very tired and I'm drawing a a blank on the actual term to use here. It's not zero interest loan, it's immediately forgiven loan, so.
But it it's good news.
Either way, yes.
How we're going to work on the issue.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, do you have a timeline on the uh manganese filter filtration media?
Yeah, I needed to check with Alan, uh, it's been ordered, it could be going in at any point now, I think it's, I don't even know if it it it. It may already be there, the shipping, um.
Yeah, I I have seen the quote, so.
Yeah.
We should be good to go. It's under five thousand.
It was under five thousand.
I was gonna ask, is there a cost on that?
It was. Four thousand four hundred and ninety-nine, thank you.
You got that one.
So it's already been ordered, it's on its way, it will be put in.
All right, um, the next is informational personnel resignations, retirements, leave of absentee and appointment. You get to Claire.
So, uh. There's, there are several people we want to specifically call out, especially for the retirement.
And Tracy. Congratulate her and wish her the best.
So, so Claire has worked so closely with these these teachers, and so she 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 has prepared some words.
So we definitely wanted to take a a few minutes to recognize the teachers um in our district that are retiring, and so one Tracy Engel.
So we definitely wanted to take a, a few minutes to recognize the teachers, um, in our district that are retiring. And so one Tracy Nangle was here. So Tracy, um, was hired in two thousand eight. I was thrilled. I was part of the interview team that, that hired her. She was amazing even then. Um, she was hired in two thousand eight, the year that the middle school, um, opened. Over the years, Tracy's taught, taught English Language Arts, Social Studies and Media Communications at the middle school. She also served as a CTE coordinator and technology integration teacher, which was an incredible blessing when we went virtual in two thousand twenty. She provided leadership, staff development, instructional support to teachers and administrators and we're so thankful for her. She comes in every single day with a smile. Her wit in humor, um, serves her well interacting with middle school students. She's an asset to her team and brings a calmness, positivity and creativity in everything that she does. She has served on our school improvement team and attended many school events um, outside of the school day to be with her students. Tracy's now able to devote her time to her husband, her grown children and her beautiful grandchildren. She's been an integral part of our school community and she will be dearly and sorely missed.
And I, I just want to say with Tracy, she is my, um, my teacher counterpart because like her, I'm dual certified in English and Social Studies. Taught, taught both, uh, technology became our focus for education. I, for a while, was a technology, uh, teacher, technology coordinator. That's what she did. So English, um, history nerd, technology nerd, um, uh, we were, uh, I was she was one of the, the, the teachers that made me feel the most welcome because, uh, we had the, uh, fellow geek, um, connection.
Um, also retiring this year is Gail O'Keefe. Gail O'Keefe was hired in two thousand one. Uh, she started at North Smithfield, um, high school when the middle school wasn't even open yet. So, um, she started about twenty, twenty-four years ago. She helped, um, middle school students feel like a part of the junior, senior high school and she was a team leader at the time when she was up, up there. Um, and then we moved to the brand new school in two thousand eight. She's poured our heart and soul, soul into our teaching and her students. Her passion and love for science is evident and shines through in her teaching. She has held many additional roles here in North Smithfield, including school improvement team member, science Olympiad advisor, team leader, club advisor, um, and, and many more. She's, um, loved by, um, all at NSMS and um, she will be able to devote her free time to her family and her beautiful grand, grandbaby. So we're very happy, um, for her, but she will be missed also. And at North Smithfield Elementary School will be losing Colleen Carr. So Colleen Carr, um, has been with us for twenty-four years. Um, and we just want to recognize, uh, the incredible contributions of Mrs. Carr as she embarks on a well of reserved retirement. Mrs. Carr started her career in two thousand one in the literacy department where her talent and passion for children, um, to teach them to read and write became evident. She then became a valued member of the kindergarten team where she has served, um, our community for so many years, shaping the hearts and minds of countless young learners. Her dedication, patience, unwavering passion for teaching our youngest learners have create, and she's created a nurturing environment where children not only learn their ABCs, but also builds confidence and kindness and love of learning. She's, uh, the very definition of a warm, warm demander, a teacher who has high expectations for herself and her students um, and helps them to meet the expectations with love, warmth and support. We will miss her expert, her expertise, her laugh and quiet wisdom. This retirement will allow her to do the things that she loves most, which is travel, spend time near the water, spend time with our family, which, um, includes being a grandmother to baby Oliver and twin grandbabies who are expected in the fall. Um, she will be greatly missed, um, in the North Smithfield community. And finally, Kelly Huback, who's a, a reading teacher at, um, North Smithfield Elementary School, and she was hired in two thousand seven. So she's retiring after years of inspiring and empowering our young readers as one of our, um, elementary reading specialists. She started at Hallwell in two thousand seven and then became um, a part of the reading team at NSCS. Her experience, expertise, dedication and ability to connect with children has made her an invaluable resource for both students and staff. Mrs. Huback, um, has shown a tireless commitment to creating strong readers in our school and frequently volunteers at literacy nights during reading week and world read aloud day. She, um, her famous appearance as Straga Nona, um, Spring, Straga Nona, um, will always be a favorite, uh, memory. And Kelly is also known for her exceptionally kind and generous heart, often organizing recognition, celebrations, fundraising for all staff at NSCS. And I've teased her over the years and said, well, I know I'll never be homeless, Kelly, because you would take me, you would take anyone in. So she does have such a, such a wonderful heart. Uh, to know Kelly is to love her. As she moves into this new chapter, we want to express our deepest gratitude for the lasting impact she's made on our community. We hope her retirement is filled with, uh, time for her family and, including her grandchildren that she loves so dearly and time, um, spent in Maine where she loves to be. So we wish all of these, these, uh, amazing women all the best. We thank them for their time and service in North Smithfield.
Thank you.
When you think about it, that's over eighty years of dedication and commitment to North Smithfield. And they have made a difference. And I, I hope they know that, as you said, they will be missed.
And while we're wishing well and saying goodbye to some, uh, I just want to say hello to Julian Foley. She will be the new smiling face you see at the high school front office. Uh, so, uh, there were a number of people who interviewed for the position. She was easily the number one choice and we're so happy to have her here and looking forward to, uh, you meeting her, uh, when you go to the high school.
Thank you. Um, and last, all business, Alicia.
So unfortunately, no update on state aid. I know. Friday at Riasbo, Ride is expected to speak. So at, and it does involve the funding formula, so hopefully there's movement by the end of the week, early next week. As soon as I get something, I will update you immediately. Um, and we can move forward.
Right.
Unfortunately, we're just kind of in a holding pattern. I'm sorry.
Yeah, and, and that's understandable. And as we told the budget committee.
Yeah.
Once we hear something, if they want to meet with us again.
Absolutely.
We'll go.
And like I said, they will update using the March numbers. So they have them. I'm just, we're just waiting.
Okay. Is there anything else tonight? Motion to adjourn. So who? All of us in favor? Aye, we are adjourned.